We'll call the Select Board meeting in-person meeting to order. This meeting is also available, accessible virtually. The virtual meeting links are included on-
This meeting is being recorded.
The virtual meeting links are included on the meeting notice that was posted in advance of the meeting and in accordance with the open meeting law. The board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORC. NORC, it is also being recorded by the town via Zoom and it may be recorded by other local media. So if we could please rise and we're going to state the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our first order of business is public comment. If there is anyone that would like to make any public comment, please chat. I guess, raise your hand, wave your hand.
I'm not seeing any, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. So we're going to move on to our next order of business, which is actually Joe's Quick Mark change of manager and DBA. And I did notice the applicant counsel, which is attorney Barnoski, was joining us virtually. So, but Mr. Gilberto, he is present virtually, but Mr. Gilberto, did you want to speak to that agenda item, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, so we are recommending to the board that we continue consideration of these two agenda items to the next regular meeting, which will be Monday, November 22, so that we can continue review of the application for change of manager. And that that has been relayed, I believe, to the attorney and through the attorney to the applicant.
Okay. And are we going to republish the meeting notice?
We wouldn't generally, but we will. I believe that the DBA republication would be a good courtesy for us to do.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, a motion to continue consideration of both items regarding Joe's Quick Mark to November 22.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, discussion.
The attorney who represents the entity here in agreement?
Attorney Barnoski, you can-
He just unmuted.
We know you're virtual.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. Yes, for the record, Adam Barnoski on behalf of the applicant. I was just checking in, just to see if there were any other questions, but we are fine with answering a few questions the board has and then coming back before you in a few weeks.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
At 7:30 PM.
All right. So again, the motion is to continue the public hearing on the change of manager and change of doing business as far Quick Mark 231 Main Street. Motion, thirdly, by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. One more hand, Rick.
Madam Chair, to clarify, it's not a public hearing. It's a continued consideration of the matter.
Until 7:30.
Oh, see, my agenda packet, it's a public hearing.
The next item is a hearing, Madam Chair.
It says public hearing.
No, not the updated one from up there.
Well, I'm looking at my packet and it will be continuing it in next meeting. Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Now let's move on to the 7:45 public hearing on the change of stock interest for China Cuisine, Inc., 235 Main Street. I see the applicants here. If you could come to the table where the microphone is, please state your names and addresses for the record. And you are representing yourself on the application?
Yes.
Okay. If you could please, it's hard to hear, so if you could please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mai Hui. I am manager of China Cuisine and I'm here for the proof of change of stock to Jennifer Hui and Benjamin Hui.
Address.
The address is 235 Main Street, North Reading, Massachusetts.
Okay. You want to identify you on the application as well?
Yeah, I'm Vanessa Vector, HUI, HUI. Yeah, I'm husband of Mai. She's the manager of China Cuisine, Inc., 235 Main Street, North Reading.
And you can, do you have anyone here or are you representing yourselves on this?
We're representing ourselves.
Okay. And is the individual to whom the transfer is being made here with you?
No.
Or joining us virtually?
No.
Okay. So why don't you give us some information on your application?
Madam Chair.
Yes? Oh, Mr. Gilberto?
Through you. There is a hearing notice for this item as required.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's page 42. And I did see where you saw it. It said it for the last item and I apologize for that mistake. Thank you.
All right. Let me just, I'm sorry. Let me, before we, before we hear you on the application, let me just read the hearing notice. I'm sorry, Mr. Gilberto. That was my error. All right. In accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Law, a public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Monday, November 1, 2021, at 7:45 PM on the application of China Cuisine, Inc., for a change of stock interest for the common virtual all alcohol license, which is exercised at 235 Main Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, in a one-story building of approximately 4,000 square feet with kitchen, dining room, and restaurants. This hearing is anticipated to be held in person in Room 14 of Town Hall located at 235 North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, and via virtual technology as follows. And the publication lists the Zoom link, telephone link, dial-by-location, meeting ID, and this is by the Select Board, published October 21, 2021. Okay. So you could just tell us about the application.
Yeah, the application is to transfer some of the stock ownership to our children. Jennifer Hui is our daughter and Benjamin Hui is our son. Right now, at this time, like Mai, my wife, she own like 50% of the company, which we have like 100 share outstanding. Basically, she own 50 shares and I own 50 shares also. And right now, we, you know, ask, you know, your approval, there's a level of approval to transfer like to our children, like 20 share to Jennifer Hui from Mai and 20 share from my 50 shares to Benjamin Hui, our son.
Okay. So do we have any questions of the applicants?
None whatsoever.
No.
Very good, Dave. I'm just happy that you're still here. You've survived the pandemic. You fed the community well and-
Always.
And it's nice to see that you're continuing to share with your son and your daughter. So, all right, no problem at all.
All right. And all the certificates that are required appear to be in order, Mr. Gilberto, and there's no other issues? There's no disciplinary issues or anything with this, anything that's been noted here? It looks like all the, all the, both certificates are current in the packet.
Yes, that's correct, Madam Chair.
All right. So do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Gilberto.
I did have one question and it's more just to affirm through you to, to the applicants. So it looks like the restaurant will continue to be operated by your family, a combination of yourselves and your children?
Yes, at this time, yes.
Is there any third party that is going to be involved or is projected to be involved in operating the restaurant?
No, at this time, it's not. But actually, you know, maybe I can review the, as a potential that we are looking for partner to involve in the near future, but not at this time, yes.
Thank you.
All right. So the manager is going to remain the same, which is you.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So do any more questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to-
Hold on.
Oh, you're right. Okay. You're right. We're going to move to the, we're going to move to the public comment portion of this hearing. Is there anyone here or joining us virtually that wishes to speak in favor of this application?
I see none.
Is there anyone here in person or joining us virtually that wishes to speak in opposition to this application?
I see none.
Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting and now move to a vote. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve a change of stock interest for a common particular all alcohol beverage license for China Cuisine, Inc., 235 Main Street, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everybody. Bye, see you later.
Good night.
You too. All right. Our next order of business is to review the 2020 audit with our auditor, Mr. Hinkston. He's here. Come on up. Join us, please. Introduce yourself in the microphone. Tell us what the findings are.
Madam Chair, through you, I will just note for the public that the finance director is participating in tonight's conversation. Ms. Rourke is here virtually.
Should I keep my mask on? What's that? Can you hear me okay if I talk?
The custom has been, do Madam Chair, to allow the speaker to lower their mask if they'd like.
I didn't know that.
I'm sorry. I should have made that clear.
But I talk very loudly, so.
I'm fine. I can do it either way.
No, it's better to hear you without the mask on.
We'll see. Well, thank you for letting us through the audit again. I'll be brief because there's really no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies or anything like that in the management letter this year or any internal control-related matters. It's more hopefully informative above a couple of things. Feel free to ask a question or interject a comment at any time. I don't, I don't mind a bit. The first comment deals with the, the significant increase in the town's other post-employment benefits liability. It went up from about $23 million from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. And substantially all of that increase related to the, the change in the discount rate. The discount rate used in 2019 was 3.5% and it was 2.21% in fiscal year 20. And when the actuary is determining the discount rate, a key component is how much is in the OPEB trust fund. And if there's a significant amount in it, they can use what's called the long-term expected rate of return. And in fiscal year 20, that would have been 6.4, 6.4% instead of the 2.21. And the, the long-term rate of return, expected long-term rate of return is a fairly stable rate. It was 6.5 this year. It's probably about 6.6, 6.7. It's always fairly stable over a number of years. But the municipal bond rate, which you're required to use if you don't have a significantly funded OPEB trust, is more volatile and it went from 3.5% to that 2.21%. If those of you have, have the financial statements with you, if you could turn to page 58, no, I can explain it. One of the things in the financial statements and in your actuarial reports is something called the sensitivity analysis. And when the, when the actuaries are doing their, their valuation of your OPEB liability, which was $99 million, 99.7 this year, they, they have-
It's, it's on page, it starts on page 92.
Oh, thank you.
93, but-
Page 153.
Oh, I'm downloading the PDF, so.
We are. We're trying to solve to it. It would help us to just get there before you.
Okay.
Page 153 for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's a pretty long report.
Yeah, it is.
Madam Chair.
I'm there.
Yeah, let's let everybody. Everybody all set?
Yep.
Yep.
And Mike, if you don't mind us, just so we can just, if you could facilitate where we're going in this, because it's a, it's quite a lengthy, just let us know which one. So go ahead, Mr. Hinkston. I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, no. So the actuary is required to do something called a sensitivity analysis on a couple of, of the assumptions that they do. Because when they're doing their, their evaluation, most of the things are, to get to the number of assumptions, there's mortality tables they use, how many of your current employees are actually going to take the benefit, the discount rate and healthcare trend rates. And so each one of those, as they change, it affects what the OPEB liability would be. So if you look at the, at the sensitivity analysis for the discount rate, at 2.21%, it's $99,712,000. If you had a 1% better discount rate, it, it goes down to $82 million. So that's a $17 million swing. And although it doesn't work quite like this, you had, because you can't use the expected long-term rate of return, which is about four percentage points higher, if you, if you multiplied the 17 by 4%, it would be, you know, $68 million, $1 million less. So a funded type, OPEB trust means a big number change in your OPEB liability, a significantly funded one. There's also, just to show you, $99 million, if you did 1% better on that, it's $17 million better. And also, if you did 1% better on the healthcare trend rate than what they're projecting, they're projecting it's going to be 8% increase for the first year and then going up 3.9%. So if it only went up 7% and down to 2.9, it would be $20 million better. So just those two things alone, 1% change in two of the assumptions means a $37 million change in that liability. So it's not that this is, you know, a shot in the dark, like that they're taking, they're taking all these assumptions they're using according to standards, but it, but you need a crystal ball to know what the discount rate is going to be going out for 30 years or, or the healthcare trend rates for 30 years. So they have to disclose this thing. So my recommendation is, is to talk to your actuary almost every year and find out where, where you need to be in order to get to be able to use the, the long-term expected rate of return instead of the municipal bond rate. It's, it's probably going to be a live number. So I would say that if you can get that number from, from the actuary and, and try to make a goal to get to, to that number in five to 10 years, it'll, it'll make a much better position on your balance sheet and, and help fund, and help fund it at the same time. So it'll make you look a lot better to the art investors, bond, bond-raiding agencies.
Madam Chair, just in relation to, what have you, what have you seen? You know, from a percentage standpoint, where's the sweet spot that, that you think is?
I, I'm, there's actually something called a blended rate. So while you're working your way up to it, if studies say that you need 10 million, you have, you have, say, 2 million. Say, she, the actuary says you need 10 million to get to the, use the expected long-term rate of return, which will be around 6.5%. That's, that's the air number that's up there. If you get, as you're working your way up, they'll let you do a blended rate so that if you're not quite there, they'll do a blended rate between up at 6.5 or whatever the municipal bond rate is at the time. So I do have some places that are funded enough, that are funded enough that can use the 6.54 for going up for the whole time. So their liabilities are much, much smaller, you know, so.
And as far as our approach at this particular point in time, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gilberto, you know, we're putting $350,000 a year. And I think the term we used a few years back was, you know, let's stop the bleeding. You know, we can't probably, we can probably never catch up, per se. So let's stop the bleeding, pay our liabilities going forward. And at some point, that portion, which is an outstanding liability, is going to retreat as people retire and fall off the rolls, so to speak.
Yes. You know, but at that rate, it would be, you know, it'd be quite a, quite a way though. But one of the things some people are putting into their OPEB plan and bond-raiding agencies are liking it is the retirement system will be funded in 2032. And if you put into your OPEB plan that you're going to take, because it'll fall off a cliff, your liability, I mean, your assessment will fall off a cliff when it's fully funded. And if you say that we're going to take X percentage of that and, and put that into the OPEB trust, that helps them determine how much will be in the trust going forward. So it helps the actuary and helps the bond-raiding, helps them get you to a blended rate to. So it's not an easy, it's not an easy decision what, whether to put more money into that because it needs less money for other periods. So, but it, in the long term, it could mean bond rating to, which could save you money on interest. So it's a, it's a, it's a lot of consideration to be done. And I think it starts with asking your actuary what the number is. And, and then the issue is, it's like, if she said, the current actuary said it's $10 million, well, that's $10 million based on this valuation, based on the next valuation. If you did not, or if you did better, then if they had like a 2.21% in discount rate and you earned 7%, that might go down, that, what you need in a, in a fund because, just because of the changing circumstances. So it's not a number that's just always there, just like the liability isn't a number that never changes.
And as far as the change, right, Madam Chair, as far as the change that took place in regard to the discount rate, who changed that? Who, you know, again-
It's the feds. It's the municipal bond rate. That's just, it's like, not the feds, it's just, that's the municipal bond rate, what it changes every, you know, every month and what you have to use is what the June 30 municipal bond rate is. So it just happened to be a very down, down year on. So next year, to pop back up to 2.5. But that, that's why it'll be a volatile number as long as you're tied to that municipal bond rate.
Okay. So any other questions at this point? Mr. Studo.
No.
I'm actually really the only comment for this year. The, the rest of it is, just has to do with the prior year, prior year's bonus. And the first prior year one is, had to do with the bills and warrants payment. And that comment really had two parts. The first part was just letting you know that you could have designate one member of the board to approve the warrant and the bills. But the second part was to remind you that the actual review of the invoices is an important element of the internal control structure. Currently, the bills are reviewed, every invoice is reviewed by the accounting source. But the selectmen approve of the warrant and authorization is the check of the invoices, is the checks and balance on them. So we, I don't think that part has been implemented yet, but we still think it's an important element. And the reason is because there has been some fraud in recent years at that level. And the only way that that, 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 the fraud that was perpetrated at that level would have been caught is by somebody above that level. And so it was somebody at the second highest, in the places that I know of, it was at the places at the second highest level in the internal control stuff, structure perpetrated the fraud. So there was nobody except the board review above them to, to, to have caught that fraud. So.
Yeah, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. So this is something that we've had quite a bit of discussion about since it was identified a year ago. And, you know, one of the things that we are looking at is a potential alteration in the purchasing process to, to move some of the smaller purchase order item review that occurs, which often is very time-consuming and delayed, to be candid, if you haven't heard that from employees. And I'm laughing because you all have heard that in, I'm sure, over the years, to try to open an avenue where we can more closely associate the invoices with the payments through, through our, our accounting system. So that's something that we're, we're looking at. It may be a pretty complex thing for us to do, but based on that recommendation, I think it's something that maybe will be worthwhile so that, you know, when you're looking or when I'm looking at the payments, I'm able to link right to an invoice, which is the recommendation that was provided, and review it and sort of shift my time in the review away from the smaller front end where it's really a purchase order but not a payment, more towards assisting you in reviewing at the time of payment.
That's a, that's a, I think that that's a great idea. And I will say that right now, all of my stuff is going into wasteland. I don't know where it's gone, but I do know at least three of our members signed. But I also know that in the times when I do receive it, the few times that I have questions, Liz will, Liz will answer right away.
Yes.
What is this for? I don't understand this charge. But when we, by the time we get it, it's pages and pages and pages of, you know, stuff that you, we regularly see. So that would be, I think, a lot put upon the board to, to figure out, that looks like a strange charge. What is that? So that would be great, just so. But again, the times that I've said, wait a minute, what is this? This doesn't make any sense. Stuff that I don't recognize. I get an answer instantly from, from Liz to explain what it is, you know?
Yes.
Any other questions on that? No. Mr. O'Leary, you're all set? Okay.
The last prior year comment just had to do with the tax pro closures. This was a recommendation just to look at the tax foreclosure list. Generally, those, the parcels on that are, are land of low value, are, are landlocked lands that have just been, been let go. But occasionally, there's properties on there that could be sold and, and put back into the tax rolls. So we just recommended that, that you look at that periodically and try to get anything that possibly be out of the foreclosure and back onto the tax rolls. And that was implemented last year.
Any other questions? No. All right.
I was just going to jump real quick, just a couple of things about the financials. I'm not going to get into it. I'd be happy to answer any questions on it. But you had a clean opinion letter, it's probably an unmodified opinion, and, and that's the first thing that you, bond-raiding agencies look at. And you have, there's two reports on here, one for the federal branch and one for the rest of the town, on, reports on internal control, you know, compliance with laws and regulations. And both of those were clean. There were no findings on any of those. You had a real good year. Your free cash was very strong this year. You still have that $19 million by the, in the land sale count, which is very helpful to your financial position and would also, it helps your earnings on investments by a significant amount. So I think that's really good. So that's all I really have. I'm happy to answer any questions. But before I do, I'd like to thank the town for letting me do the audit for all these years. I've retired from the audit business. This is my last official exit conference and it's kind of fitting for me because this was one of my first clients. And, and so I want to thank you guys and prior boards for the confidence and the trust they placed in me all these years. I think Steve O'Leary is the only one that's been around for all of them.
I was going to say, how many years is the best?
You must have been 15 when you started, right?
How many years is the best, Dick?
You know, I was thinking about, I did it with the state before I left the state. And I left the state in 84, so, and then probably a couple of years after that, city audit and sales, so probably 87, 88. 88, so maybe I started doing the audit here.
I think we started together here.
Yeah? What was your first?
My first year here was 88.
Was it?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
Nice.
Just, but congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your candor over the years and straight shooting and letting us know where we stood. And you've done a perfect service for us. It's been greatly appreciated by me personally. And I wish you nothing but a good, long, healthy retirement.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilberto, did you have anything else to add?
I did. Thank you, Madam Chair. The year that Mr. Hinkston was on, I think, is actually fiscal year 2020, so the year ending a year and a few months ago, which was a very challenging year to review because as those of you on the financial planning team know, there was quite a bit of money moving around at the end of that fiscal year due to the pandemic. So we had CARES Act funding. We had a variety of smaller state public health grants that were coming in. I think we had a computer-related grant that came in. And so that, there was a lot of work that had to go in to reconcile to the bottom line. And Dick and the finance director both worked. and Dick and the finance director both worked overtime, literally overtime, to, to get it completed. I just want to, I know what happens in the background, and I know it's sort of what has to happen, but I want to recognize Dick for that effort for this year, and the finance director as well for that effort. And also, you know, again, I, I've been, you know, working alongside you for seven years, and I want to thank you not just for, you know, your willingness to kind of guide us along the way and, and, you know, point us in the right direction. You've always been willing to look at an issue when we've said, hey, we're not so sure what to do with this, what do you think? Whether it's during the audit or outside the audit as well, and there's probably a dozen times in, in my seven years where you sort of helped us find our way through something, and I just want to thank you for that as well. And I'll echo Mr. O'Leary's comments, I wish you a healthy retirement.
Thank you. Be kind to your finance people this year, it was, it's been a tough year for them.
Mr. Hinkston, what does an auditor do in retirement? What are you doing? Someone to cap you as a consultant?
You know what, I'm doing, I'm working like a couple of days a week at some of my small little clients, nothing, no audits, nothing big, but it's comes, it's seasonal, so come December, I'm not going to have anything to do, so I'll let you know then. I hope it's travel, that's what I hope.
Good, good, well, best wishes for.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Dick.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next order of business is a vote to approve the useful life for capital items. We'll turn that to Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, these are two items that have been approved for acquisition by town meeting, I believe at our June 2021 town meeting. They are items for which our overall capital and financial plan calls for us to borrow to make the purchases, and our borrowing plan factors a borrowing term, a payback term of a longer period of time than is identified for in state statute. State law allows for that to occur by authorization of a vote of the select board. So in this case, the items are both, I believe, able to be borrowed for a five-year period. We are seeking to borrow for a 10-year period in accordance with the plan that the capital improvement planning committee recommended. To give you some assurance, the pickup truck that we're talking about, we generally keep those trucks for 12 to 13 years, so longer than the useful life that you're being asked to vote. And in the case of the Bobcat, the other item, our last Bobcat lasted approximately 15 years. So I stand here today confident that this is the right step, in addition to be fulfilling our, our overall financial plan for capital for this current fiscal year. And we believe we've prepared a motion.
Questions? Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with a portion of the proceeds of the $185,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed June 5, 2021, Article 21, is hereby determined pursuant to GLC 44 to be as follows. Departmental equipment, $95,000, maximum useful life, 10 years. Departmental equipment, $90,000, maximum useful life, 10 years.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
unanimous. Next order of business is the investment policy. It's our second reading and adoption of the investment policy. We had the first reading where we actually waived the reading and voted to waive the reading, but we had the first reading last week. And is there any further input or discussion? Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up, first I want to recognize members of the trustees and trust funds who are here, Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Osborne, and Ms. McGoldrick, they're here virtually, I appreciate them joining us again this evening. I've not received any further comment other than an inquiry from you, Madam Chair, with regard to any opinion that the auditor might have on the policy. I did speak with him about that question. His, his role is largely, or the, the auditor's role, would largely be to monitor the investments. That's more than likely where the auditor would weigh in, to make sure that those investments are aligned with the policy. So that was the response that he provided us, and I'm confident that that would be the case moving forward. Not just for this group, but should we elect to expand this policy to include all of the town's investments, that that would be the case as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for answering that, Mr. Gilberto. Any other comments or questions?
No.
We're all set to move forward? All right, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the second reading and adoption of the trustees of trust funds policy and to waive the reading of the entire policy.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
unanimous? Okay.
Madam Chair, through you to the trustees, thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us in the work on this policy as well. All right, the next order of business, we have on the agenda the vote to ratify the NRIS memorandum, we're going to table that.
Do we need a motion?
No, you do not.
All right, so we're going to move on to the next order of business, which is Mr. Gilberto, Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if you'd be there with me for one moment.
Sure.
While I.
Somebody want to pinch me?
We must have got to it.
General Board Member report.
He was, he was expecting to get to that at 9:30, 10:00.
Madam Chair, through you, thank you. First, I attached for the board, listing of projects that I provided at the request of Senator Bruce Tar and Representative Brad Jones, in anticipation of possible funding opportunities in the coming weeks and months. These will be funding opportunities at the state level. The list reflects unfunded capital projects, other projects that are in the planning stages, and select operating budget items that have also not been funded. I've spoken with the superintendent of schools, he provided some capital items, and he may also provide additional non-capital items to be added to the list. It was an extensive list, I think you saw it, and we sort of were looking to keep the conversation really broad, dependent upon the funding source that might show up. One such funding source, for those who are not aware, was a bill to spend surplus, and I believe a portion of ARPA funding, at the state level approved last week. Representative Jones has informed me that he has, was able to secure funding for $100,000 for our turf field replacement process, project, as well as $100,000 for improvements to Agnes River Park. Those considerations will then be taken up in the Senate, which I believe is going to be taking up this, their version of this bill later this week, and we will await and see what gets signed into law. So our efforts to try to gather this, and I want to recognize the superintendent of schools, the assistant superintendent, and the finance director for scrambling to put this together and so that we can have as extensive a list as possible. And we look forward to, to more opportunity to, working with the state in, in the coming, coming months, as we've all, I think, are very familiar with the resources that are now available at the state level. I'm pleased to report that the senior center has resumed in-person programming, a cheer dancing program started up earlier in the month of October, and a weekly congregate lunch program is scheduled to begin this Wednesday, November 3. I'd also ask folks, as they enter the building, please take note of the new stairs, which were completed in September. They came out really nice, which is really good to see. We have, for those who don't know, we do have a siding and painting project that was funded in, physically a 2022 capital project, that will also put additional attention into that building. Related to that, we have an ongoing siding and painting project at the Flint Memorial Library Building. And while we have made a lot of progress, we are encountering a significant amount of deterioration in the siding. So the DBW director will be over with, the chair of the Historic District Commission to look at that, I believe tomorrow, and further understand what the extent might be, what our options are, and we may also seek to involve the architect from our facilities' master plan as well, just to determine what the right next steps will be for us on that very important restoration project. So there'll be more to come on that. We have two appropriations, you may recall, the original one from two years ago, and a second one that we did in the fall of last year. So we do have resources with, with regard to how to address it, but it may become an issue of the procurement and how we procure those resources, as well as the timing as we come to the end of this construction season. So more to come on that, but I do want to make the board aware that we're certainly looking into that. I received a, a letter asking you to sign on to a letter addressing net zero stretch code. As I wrote to the board, I did not intend to sign on to this as a matter of policy, but I wanted to forward it along to the board for, for its consideration. I put it into my, my report. I'm pleased to inform the board and the public of transition that's occurred within the town hall, and I may have mentioned this two meetings ago, but our Board of Health Administrative Assistant Stephanie Conley has moved from the Health Department to the Town Clerk's office, and Chrissy Doolin, who was in the Conservation Commission office, has moved over to the Health Department office. I want to thank both of these hardworking women for their continued service to the town of North Reading. Additionally, and this was not in my, my written report, but I think you are all aware that we are pleased to have been awarded the Youth Substance Abuse Grant from the federal government. That's certainly great news for us to be able to continue that program for what we believe will be another five years. It's a reflection of quite a bit of effort on the part of many folks, full and part-time employees, full and part-time volunteers, to, to get us through the, to that process. And I want to specifically recognize Amy Luckowitz for her, for her efforts on that. And I believe that that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Questions for the TA?
No.
All right, let's do a board round of applause. Mr. O'Leary.
Again, wastewater subcommittee, Mr. Studo and myself and the town administrator and the rest of the team, we're meeting regularly now, the town meeting is taking favorable action, and we can anticipate you to be getting lots of updates over the next few months in relation to where we're at, in relation to the wastewater project. So we'll, we'll keep you abreast of that. Again, Board of Health, again, will be meeting on the 18th at 7:00 PM to, again, to continue to monitor, so they do continue to monitor positivity rates along with everything else that has to do with the pandemic, and still continuing to do the normal activities that are required of them statutorily. Other than that, I think, pretty well said, I just would like to mention the fact that Thursday evening, was it? Mr. Waller did a fantastic job, all by himself unfortunately, but fortunate for everybody that was there, and those that who were attending virtually, I won't steal his thunder, he gave a tremendous report, showing a tremendous amount of effort that was put into the subject matter, and outlined a vision for, for our community that I think we should be embracing as a board, and I'm sure he's going to be broaching the subject with us in short order. So, but again, Mr. Studo was present too, and I was just vaguely impressed with the presentation, the topless, the in-depth statistics and analytics that took place, figuring out what's going on in our community and what we have to look forward to going forward. So we have some action to take, and I look forward to assisting him and my colleagues here to address the future of our community. All set, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Waller, oh, excuse me, raising, raising your hand there.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I don't mean to interrupt, but Mr. O'Leary's reminded me, so I have signed an engineering contract with Wright Pierce for the next phase, which was funded at the October town meeting. It's a $2.4 million contract, a couple hundred thousand dollars less than we were projecting. You know, we, we feel that we're in a good spot with the appropriation, and I want to recognize the effort to try to really keep that moving, particularly Mr. Fariisi to stay on top, right on top of me to make sure I signed it as quickly as possible. And I also want to add, and I know it's something that has come up in previous meetings, and I could feel myself not remembering to say it a moment ago, but I've mentioned, you know, we've gone through and we've completed the study with regard to the four intersections, and our intention is to invite the consulting engineers to the first meeting in December to review the recommendations that they've offered. I will point out for the public, in some of the locations, there are short, short-term recommendations relative to signage, that the DBW is going to be proceeding with this fall. The longer term, you know, issues of realignment or signals, that we will consider after we get feedback from the select board at that meeting.
Will we get a preview of that prior to?
You'll have a presentation, and I'll get you the link through Dropbox to get the whole study as well. You'll have plenty of time to review it.
Hopefully Central and Central Park. That's extremely dangerous.
I believe there were recommendations for three of the four intersections at least, including Central Park.
Very dangerous. All right, Mr. Waller.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. No, that's, that's a great, that's a good supplement to the report.
So, yeah, last Thursday night, we did, I did present on behalf of the ad hoc H-Friendly team, which was Jennifer Ford, Catherine McKay Scott, Kim Menzeli, who has not been able to continue, but certainly was supporting it, and myself. And we had in the audience, maybe 40 people, I would say, and then I'm not sure, Michael, at some point, if, I know we had a recording, if I could see how many attended there would be great.
Sure, yeah, I believe there were 18 that, that attended. But, yeah, I, I know you've asked for the recording, I just, I need to get it.
We're trying to get that all together. So I'm not sure, I knew you couldn't make.
I was working, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, Nor Kim is going to be editing, I think, by tomorrow, and we'll have that available so you can watch it through. Unfortunately, it is an hour and a half of listening to me. My featured, my featured speaker, because of the storm, she lives in Situate, wasn't able to get there, so ended up doing all the talking. But I think, I knew the data well enough for, it was, you know, I covered for her because I heard her say it more than enough times. And the feedback was very positive, and I think you said, and I'll have to add, for it, it really is a strategic view of our future, and I'd ask for the two board members who weren't there to listen, by the strategic planning meeting, if you could listen to it. I hate to suck up an hour and a half of your time, but you have to hear the entire hour and a half in order to.
I have a flight Thursday morning, I'll.
Okay, good. Trying to figure out how to get it, I don't know how to do that on the broadcast, but whatever, whatever can happen. So anyways, it was good. Thank you, Michael, because we had a delay getting started technically, not even the IT person at the school knew how to get us going, even though we thought we were supposed to be able to get going. So Michael jumped in and saved the day, and we were only 15 minutes late, so thank you very much, Michael, for doing that. And I think that's it. Glad to wrap up a 10-year study.
All right. Mr. Gilberto.
I do want to.
When is our, what day is our strategic planning meeting?
Monday. No, that was. Two Mondays from now.
Monday, November 15.
15.
Yeah.
And what day is our next select board meeting?
Monday, November 22nd, which will also be tax, we expect will be tax classification.
I, I, maybe we can bring it up to the end, but I, I realize I'm going to be out of town, I never thought it was going to be an issue because I thought we were doing this by Zoom. So I don't mind coming in by Zoom, but I don't know if we can work that out or not.
For the, for the strategic?
No, 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 not that. No, the regular, the regular old select board meeting, the 22nd.
Oh, yeah, well, because we're doing this hybrid.
If it's a hybrid like this, you're fine. I don't know if we can do that. I, I just suddenly realized that.
Absolutely.
Through you, Madam Chair, we intend to keep the same setup. It is admittedly not perfect, but I'll, I'll dare say it's serviceable, so we intend to keep it in place.
Okay.
And it's great that you're willing to join us.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it was a commitment, I just thought we would be on, anyways, happy to be there.
Well, thank that one quick, that meeting quick.
Okay, we'll try. Probably won't.
Did you, you, I saw you raise your hand.
Yes.
So what else did you want to add?
Just to, to echo and thank the superintendent of schools, Patrick Daly. They've been very judicious about making the schools available, and I appreciate them sort of using us as a, a test to allow this event to take place and to accommodate the size crowd that we have. I want to thank Patrick for that, and I also want to recognize Allison Kane, who is always in the background carrying us with these events. She came up from a, a work she was doing at the Performing Arts Center to help us out, so thank her for that.
It's not my turn, but Allison Kane also was at our town meeting. She was there at morning, noon, and night, long after everyone left, she was breaking down the equipment too, so a kind of a pivotal part of us being able to do the presentations during these meetings.
It was supposed to be a flip-flop switch thing, even she went there and goes, somebody changed everything, so she had to like rewire on the fly. See, she's like, I don't know what happened either, so she was doing a lot of jury reading to get it. So we were delayed by 15 minutes, but it was no big deal at the end of the day, but we made it through, so.
Great.
Glad to have it done.
All right, Mr. Studo, off to you. That's it? This is kind of, wait a minute, did you want to add anything?
No, no, I don't.
This is board member report, it's not TA, he has his turn.
Yes, and just during our financial planning meeting, your presentation was talked about and how well it went over, so. Youth Services Superintendent Daly joined in and gave us a great overview of how everything's working at the schools, just, you know, giving us an update on all of that. working at the schools, just, you know, giving us an update on all of that. Jen Ford went over fall programs. One of them that caught my attention is they're going to be FaceTiming with Santa early in December. They don't have everything worked out yet, but watch for that. And of course, Veterans Events Committee, we've been working hard, getting ready for the Veterans Dinner, which is Thursday, November 11th, from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Tewksbury Country Club. If you haven't gotten your tickets yet, you might want to get them. And also talking about the proclamation, and Sue Magners working really hard on getting things done for November. She has some great ideas. She has businesses doing discounts for veterans. Ginger Gourmet is going to do 15% discounts in November. She's having veterans come in and read a book about veterans at the K through 3 at the schools. And she's asking for any veterans in town to send pictures. She wants to put them on the bulletin board, and she is going to have them put in the transcript also. So those are things she's working on.
That's great. That's what I have. That's that. All right, and Mr. Gilberto, anything to say?
Did you want to, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, do you want to speak to the daytime observance as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, because I can't make that one, so it went out of my head. Yeah, there are daytime observances also on Veterans Day at the Monument, 11 o'clock. And I think that's it, right? Do we still need speakers for that? Does anybody?
I believe, Madam Chair, she was asking if a board member could speak at the program, and I know at least one or two of you who are going to be at the dinner as well, but if we could just, at some point, designate who will speak at the daytime observance.
Is anyone available to attend that and speak to that?
What time?
11.
Is that 11?
11 o'clock, and just the proclamation.
Just to read the, yeah, the proclamation.
I might have to do that.
That's fantastic.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, I have to. 11 o'clock at the monument.
At the monument, yeah, yeah.
Because Sue wanted to do the program and just at least put the, you know, board member who'd be in attendance.
Rich, if you could, I can let her know, or unless you just want to let her know that you'll do that.
Why don't you, do you want to tell her?
I can tell her.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great.
Sure.
Just send me whatever information.
Okay.
Yes, I did want to just comment on, you know, Veterans Day, November 11th, it's the day to remember living veterans and those who lost their lives in service to our country. And just to, even if you can join for those services that Mrs. Gonzalez just mentioned, or do, you know, something else to remember veterans for the day, or, you know, do something helpful, and we do have, we have proclaimed the whole month Veterans Month, so don't just do the day, do something, you know, do more than one thing hopefully during the month. Just a quick, quick update to the board members on the master planning facilities meeting. So we had the, kind of the first rollout with the architect, HKT architects, on what their plan is, or what the buildings they're going to focus in on, and they kind of zoned in on five, which is town hall, Damon Tavern, and the third meeting house, the...
Fire station.
Build out of the fire station, the intergenerational, and the intergenerational center, right? Those are the one, two, three, four, five, five buildings that they're zoned in on. And trying to come up with the plan on, you know, moving forward, designing cost, giving us some sense of those that they determined would be the priorities for us. So that's starting to move forward again, which is great. Not really post-COVID, but coming out of COVID where everything was at a standstill. So that's about it for, that's about it for my reports, but it was a good meeting. Mr. O'Leary?
Are they going to be looking at any other facilities at all, even peripherally, such as the Hillview facility?
The Hillview, the Hillview came up in the discussion because of the location of the intergenerational center and the potential for restrictions or conditions on the land on which it's being proposed. So that segues into a brief discussion about how that's just too much for them to try to tackle in terms of what they're doing for the town. But I do think that it's important for us at our strategic planning meeting to come up with, you know, just to talk about it at our meeting in terms of a vision of the Hillview moving forward, and, you know, I think it's important, of course, for consideration of the location of the intergenerational center, but it's basically an empty function facility in a, not, an unopened tavern, while the golf, golf over there is extremely busy all the time. So it's a resource that's not generating revenue for us, and it should be. So I think there was a lot of input with regard to the land, not necessarily the Hillview, but they did briefly talk about it, and there was a little bit of chatter about it, but it's not one that they're going to focus in on for us. It's too complicated, I think, for them to focus in on it. And Mr. Gilberto, you can add anything you want to that, but my understanding is they felt that that was something too complicated to sort out for the purpose of their study for the town.
That's correct, Madam Chair. It's not a focus, but it is a building that we have sort of insisted that they keep in the discussion because of this transition that it's in. So I'm not expecting that they're going, they are not going to be doing the extensive review of systems, for example, that they would be doing at the fire department, or in the other municipal buildings. But they're aware that there's sort of this unanswered question from a programmatic standpoint of, okay, what are we going to do with the building moving forward? That's the extent that they're going to be looking at, from my understanding.
Okay, so it's not going to be ignored?
No.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood, because again, to me, I'm looking at facilities master plan. I can't exclude a major asset here, which, you know, for years was kind of paying its own way. But again, times have changed, needs may change, and we have this historic, part of an historic type building, but a facility that, you know, commission is looking for some guidance or ideas as to what we may see, how it may fit, you know, into a master plan, the use of it. If funds are going to be targeted towards it, it's going to be targeted appropriately as opposed to reacting to just a request for a proposal or something like that. So to me, it's a major facility that the town owns, that needs to be included somehow or another.
So they really weren't zoned in on that. They zoned in on these particular, you know, in the next couple of months, they gave us a chart of, you know, what tasks they expect to do, but those were only related to these five buildings. Mr. Gilberto?
In line with that, so there are seven tasks in the scope of work that we have worked out with them. The final plan and final master plan report is the seventh task, and it refer, I'm just reading directly from the scope. In addition, we will comment on the Hillview Country Club and outline the problems with its future development. As we stated in the past, it's a separate project in itself, inasmuch as there are so many moving parts, some of which are not under the town's control. So it's expected to be in the report, but it is not a focus, and I think that that's...
I think we need to definitely focus in on, as part of our strategic planning meeting. And of course, the Hillview Commission is, you know, responsible for the management of that, but I'm sure they are looking for some direction.
They're looking for any input and ideas that people may have. Again, generally, the way that they operate is, any request for funding from them or from those revenue sources, or uses of the facility generally comes through the Land Utilization Committee, you know, gets netted there, and then proposed to them, rather than sort of vetting them. But again, you know, it's at a point where, you know, we need to think about it, we need to think about what we want to do.
My understanding is that they have attempted with the exit of the previous function manager, who, as we all know, was not operating the pub. But as he exited, they did put out RFP, but got, you know, very little by way of a response. So it obviously needs some, you know, fresh set of eyes and some fresh perspective, and it also needs recruitment, an active recruitment of caterers or restaurateurs, or, you know, businesses that might come in there, together, separately, or what have you. So I think it's something that we should brainstorm, at least for part of our meeting. We have a lot to talk about at strategic plan, but we should brainstorm and get them some ideas, because it should be generating revenue, it should also be a place that we should be able to do town events there. We should be able to have, the schools should be able to utilize it, and it's basically closed. And I think we all are on the same page, and we know the Hillview Commission's on the same page with it, so. But I think as far as an RFP, it has to be, you have to actively recruit, you have to actively recruit and think outside the box of what could potentially occur there, you know, let, solicit the bids and let people come back. One, both, one or the other, both partner, what have you. And I think that let the, and make sure you're actively soliciting, targeting specific, you know.
Okay, but we can get into it as far as what the challenges are with the location and what the primary source of revenue there is, and the challenges associated with trying to run the restaurants and everything, but we'll get into that at a later date.
Sure, sure, sure. All right, but definitely, it's got to be discussed on strategic plan.
Okay, I just, you know, just in relation to the master plan, I just want to be sure that it wasn't ignored.
Yeah, Mr. Tar was there to, yeah, Mr. Tar was there to kind of give the input on behalf of the commission, but it really came up in the context of the land maybe not being available, or, you know, some reticence of locating the intergenerational center at Exeter Park, like we talked about. So there's some conditions or restrictions that, you know, we were looking to understand, you know, what's the holdup here, or untangle that for us, so that we can understand what it is we have to do to move the, you know, seek authorization from the legislature, what do we need to do to locate the intergenerational center, if we even need to do anything at all, depending on where it's located on that, on the parcel. And it was taken by eminent domain by the Hillview Commission. So there was a little bit of red tape that was explained to us by Mr. Tar, so we need to kind of get a little bit more information. Mr. Stack's been given over all that information and, you know, available to help give us input, because he's actually been there from the inception. And I think Mr. Tar's been around on the LUC for a long time as well, so. So I think we just need to untangle that a little bit, but we also need to help with some vision, you know, some planning, some, you know, some vision planning, I guess you could say. So I think our first step would be to do that in strategic plan, and then maybe have a meeting with Hillview or Commission, and, you know, do some brainstorming together, so.
Can't hurt.
Right. Mr. Gilberto, anything else? All right.
Thank you for allowing me to...
That's about it.
Madam Chair, I'm going to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.